I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 16th, 2021 special council meeting to order. Join me for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you take rolls from Janice?
Councilmember Efferson?
Here.
Councilmember Comandin? Vice Mayor Atlin?
Here.
Mayor Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Ratten is absent.
Councilmember Ratten is here.
Oh, she's on Zoom, okay. I'm sorry, I was told you weren't going to be here.
Okay, can I get approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're going to have to give a roll call.
You roll call in the vote?
Yep.
Janice?
For approval of the agenda?
Councilmember Efferson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atlin?
Aye.
Mayor Rhodes?
Aye.
Aye, have it. Closed session items will be conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of section 54956.9 of the government code, three cases. Second one's pursuant to government code section 54956.8, conference with real property negotiator, property 17 East Main Street, APN 004-101-006, agency negotiator Michael Rock, interim city manager, negotiating party Wayne Moore, property owner. Third one is conference with labor negotiations pursuant to government code 54957.6, agency negotiator Michael Rock, interim city manager, employee organization, I am Police Officers Association. Fourth one, it is intention of city council to meet in closed session regarding public employee appointment, city manager pursuant to government code section, I believe that was supposed to say, 54957. Open up for public comment. Any public comment not on Zoom? Close public comment. We will go into closed session. I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 16th, 2021 city council meeting to order. Janice, could you call, roll please.
Councilmember Efferson?
Here.
Councilmember Comandin? Councilmember Ratten?
Here on Zoom.
Vice Mayor Atlin?
Here.
Mayor Rhodes?
Here.
Would you like to join me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I would like in the consent calendar if we could pull the adoption resolution of approving the salary schedule. Do you have a second?
Um, the second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're going to roll call though, I think.
Is Diane on?
Yes.
Yes.
Janice, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Efferson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten?
No.
Vice Mayor Atlin?
Aye.
And Mayor Rhodes?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to presentations, announcements, we have none. Move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment that is not on the agenda?
My name's David Anderson. First, thank you Stacy for pulling that item off the consent agenda. I would like to speak to that if I can, will that be possible?
Is he, yeah, I think he's on. He's on the regular agenda.
Okay. I just wanted to indicate that I have a number-
It's on the regular agenda, Dave, though, so when we bring it up, you can come up and speak on it.
Okay.
Unless you have something else, some other subject.
I'll touch on it when I get a chance. I just wanted to make note of the fact that I've had a number of PRA requests over the last several months, and virtually none of them have been complete. They're either partially missing and in some cases totally no response whatsoever. And I think that's sort of the reflection of either there's something to hide or there's some board management going on. I don't know what the answer is, but just be aware, there are a number of PRA requests that have been non-responsive.
Great, thank you. Should be five here for each council, but since you're here, I can bore all five of you at once.
Well, basically, apparently the Orange County School District is so big, they have their own legal department, and they put out about 50 pages worth of legal opinions about the thing called conflict of interest. And this is a page, and it gives you the dates, April 2016. To highlight in the mid, in situations in which government code section 1090 applies, it generally prevents not only the member with the conflict of interest, but also the entire governing board upon which the official sits from making a contract. Now, you know, okay, no biggie, but if we, and you know, it refers to that section. Well, if you go to the middle of the page, in the middle, and the very last sentence of the second paragraph, government code 1090 provides in part, not all of a part, members of the legislature, state, county, district, judicial district, and city officers or employees shall not be financially interested in any contract made by them in their official capacity or by any body or board of which they are members. Again, ran across this, just thought it might be an item of interest and, any questions?
Thank you, Jim. Any other public comment?
Tommy Quinn, over on, where else, Sequoia Street, you're probably wondering why I'm here. This is just a little quick story. Very good friend of mine, he's a guy top 800 played guitar beginning in 1963, being a pretty wealthy man in Boston, had a big violin store. He was walking down the street with his dog, caught his foot on some uneven sidewalk concrete, came down his head, had a brain bleed, and died last Wednesday, which is a huge shock to me. I keep talking about this ditch. Three years ago, I talked to, what's that guy's name? That's, Trent, not Trent, what's his name? You guys want to talk about?
Public Works?
Yeah. What was his name?
What one?
Todd, yeah, Todd. I talked to him, he said I should do it. He said he knew it was right. I didn't understand why I should do it. So I'm going to ask, please, you can ask your legal counsel, who is responsible for this stuff in the evening? Am I responsible for it? Because if it isn't, I'll do it myself, but if you guys are responsible for it, I've asked for three years now, you know, and it's Tuesday night, I have to take my garbage out, and it's always a kind of a squirrely affair going down that sidewalk and getting past that ditch, you know? Where I live is not flat, it's on a hill. And so I'm asking if you would please find out if you're responsible for it or I'm responsible for it. And if you're responsible for it, would you please take care of it? Because it's just a spooky thing when you're 76 to try to do this. It would be spooky if you're 30. Now, I have no action ground about it, just would you please help me with this, okay? Okay.
Thanks, Tommy. Any other public comment? If anyone else in town? All right, we'll close public comment. Move on to the consent calendar.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Item one.
Item one.
Item one.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Roll call Lou.
Roll call. Janice, can you roll call Lou, please?
Councilmember Efferson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atlin?
Aye.
And Mayor Rhodes?
Aye.
Okay, so then we move on to item two.
Well, you can go to the public hearing, which there is none, and then all regular agenda. You're going to go to the public hearing, which there is none, and the regular agenda, which would be item number two.
Okay, okay. All right, so move on to the public hearing, which there is none, regular agenda, item number two, salary schedule. I just had a couple of questions on it. There's a bunch of new titles in there which we don't have, I'm just clarifying, are these like possible future? Like we have mechanic building, a weights water operator one, and then we have a chief plant operator.
Yeah, we probably should have deleted those. The council already adopted the budget in October. This is, the reason this came back to the council is under Gatsby rules and our auditor recommended that the council separately approve a master salary schedule so that it's clear what those salaries are. You've already adopted this in the budget, when you fully adopted the final budget. You're correct, we should remove positions that aren't funded. They shouldn't really be deleted. They're not going to be filled, they're not funded. Any position that's not funded won't be filled anyway. The council did not authorize us to fill any of those positions.
Okay, that was my question.
We really should take them out of the table.
And then the other second question I had was, why is the police salaries in here when they haven't even been negotiated yet? That's on, I don't know what page it is here, I don't know, it's, hold on, because they're not really numbered. There's this one section, like there's fire, and then it goes into police, and then elected officials.
Correct.
Where, it's current? That's current?
Yes.
Okay.
Further existing MOU.
So, but this is 2021, 2022, or?
That's current, do we change it, I think, correct? It's also negotiated or?
Can't change it until the council approves a new POA MOU.
Okay, so this is just possibly what?
Yeah, it's good right now.
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then I didn't know we were giving ourselves a raise of $800 a month. City council is going to get $1,000 a month now?
No.
That's the whole council, then?
Where are you looking?
So that's like all of us added together?
Yes.
Divided one side.
Your salary is controlled by the state government code, I can't, nobody can change that.
Okay, okay. Glad you read that long then. Okay, that's the only question I have, thank you. Open up the public comment, any public comment on this?
I would like to know about that chief plant and the one of the trainer, is what would happen if we got rid of perk? Will we be able to bring those jobs back? If you take them off the council list, they ain't there. We get rid of perk, well, you have to have another vote to create new positions.
And for the record, this is Larry Rhodes speaking. Yes, he would have to bring the items to the council to approve new positions. Yes. We'd do that for any new position.
Hi again, I'm David Anderson. Thanks for clarifying the first part, I actually had two questions about this. One was the number of wastewater treatment operators that are listed in here that clearly is inappropriate and they should be removed. It kind of raises suspicions. But the second one was, the stated amounts for the listed employees does not appear to include fringe benefits, which understates the total amount of compensation being represented. Information derived from alternate sources contradicts the total amounts of compensation. Understated compensation is misleading and not transparent. If the total amount of compensation is understated, I think the schedule should be amended and published again. Once again, explanations are in order.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment? Anyone on Zoom, John? Nope. Okay. Someone want to make a motion that we approve item two?
Well, first of all, this is Diane, I'd like to clarify, this schedule says very clearly that it's salary, it is not benefits, it is only salary. Am I correct in that, Michael?
You're correct, the adopted budget has everything in it, the base salary, all the fringe benefits, it's all covered in the budget, which the council approved last month.
And this schedule is simply the salary schedule for the employees?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the salary schedule for 2021 and 2021, 22.
Second.
And now we have a discussion.
Hands on fire!
I have nothing more further to add.
Just like that, that they expect the changes, remove the people that we don't have, we'll put them back in when we do need them, that way it'll avoid confusion like we just have.
Sure.
Thank you.
You have anything, Diane?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
Hold Lou, my second, yeah.
Okay. Well, roll call, vote please, Janice.
Councilmember Efferson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atlin?
Aye.
Mayor Rhodes?
Aye.
Okay, move on to item three, reduction in fees charged to Castle Oaks Golf Course for reduced water delivered in 2020 and 2021.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
I'm going to excuse myself from this.
Yes.
Sorry.
Go see what all the sirens are for.
Again, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As you are well aware, during this summer, it's an awful lot, during the summer, which was obviously very hot, and with our difficulties with obtaining water from ARSA, we were unable to deliver the amount of water that the golf course normally gets in an average year. It was a perfect storm of all sorts of problems. So I received a letter from George Lee, who is in the audience tonight, representing the golf course, requesting that the city reconsider the, basically the fees that are paid by Castle Oaks to the city for the delivery of wastewater, treated wastewater from the tertiary plant, which is also known as the Castle Oaks Wastewater Reclamation Plant. This was not an easy task for me. I talked to George, I did a ton of research, I looked at all the agreements that we've had with the golf course, and I tried to come up with a staff report that reflects the fact that we definitely delivered less water than we normally do, that's very clear. But I needed to come up with a way in which to quantify that, which I attempted to do here. And so what I did is, I looked at the last six years of delivery of water to the golf course, and I took the six-year average, which is 450 acre feet. And then I looked at the last two years, where we clearly delivered less water than the average of the six years, but also less water than any of the other four years prior to that. And I came up with the number that I came up with, which after you crunched all the numbers, comes out to $21,467 that I believe, and my recommendation to the city council is that we reduce the rates by that number based on the historical averages and the historical delivery of wastewater to the golf course. And I feel that I've tried to be as fair and balanced in terms of what was delivered in a normal year, an average year, versus what happened over the last two years. And again, this is a fairly significant rebate in terms of the total amount of costs to the golf course, in terms of what they pay the city each year for us to deliver them water. So it comes out to a 15% rebate for 2020 and another 15% rebate for 2021 based on their annual payment of $70,000 a year that they pay us to deliver them wastewater. So that's how I got to that number, $21,467. I did the best I could based on as much factual information and historical information as we had, and again, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay, I got a couple. I normally don't like this city having to support financing over the golf course in any way, but this time I believe we should, because I believe this city is a perk, the reason this is happening. George has spent a lot of money on repairing it and getting it back into shape.
He has.
And right when that happened, he got his water shut off. So with that said, I do want to help him. The second thing is, I was, and still am, heavily involved in trying to fix this situation, and there is a bunch of documentation kind of missing, as far as like the wells and whatnot. It says here there was two drill, two wells drilled, which it ended up, there was not two, there was only one, but then you had to pay for abandonment of first well, so that one, that documentation's kind of incorrect. And this last question, I guess, was there any negotiations? Was Mr. Lee asking for another amount, or did you just come up with this number and think that was the fair thing?
No, I spoke to George several times. There's a, we have to be very careful with this. We, you know, we walk a very fine line between a rebate versus a gift of public funds, and we have to be extremely careful about how we go about that. So I try very hard to base this on factual information that we have, and I understand he spent a lot of money doing things in a very difficult period of time, but the public's money can only be spent to remedy or to be fair or to honor a contract that we have, and I can't base that on what he spent on his end to do things that he felt he needed to do. Unfortunately, I can't do that, that's not something that a public agency can do. We can only base a reduction in fees based on the contract we have with the golf course and based on what we promised to deliver versus what we did deliver. And I understand, and I've talked to George about this several times, I know he spent a lot of money on wells, drilling, you know, and other stuff, but we have to be extremely careful about how we spend the public's money, and it has to be based on something that is legally defensible. And I do believe that the number I came up with is legally defensible, and that it's not a gift of public funds.
Okay. Questions?
For explanation.
Do we need a motion before we can have this kind of conversation?
No, it's technical.
Technical questions.
Not yet.
I'll go down, it makes sense, I read it.
All right, I open up the public comment. Any public comment on that?
I have a real problem, you said you read the contract, and I couldn't find it, I got it somewhere, but they only pay $30,000 for the water, and $40,000 is supposed to go for the lease, so that should be rated figured on a 30,000, not 70. If you look at the contract, it says that in there. I just wanted to bring that up. And another thing, that contract is now in void because of the guy that signed it was a felon at the time. And if you look at the, look at the records, your own records that were never released, they did a study on a traffic, not a parking ticket, San Francisco, and they never released it. You were on the committee when that happened. Mr. Plank, he did parking ticket, they bet Jackson's investigated it. Thank you.
Hi, David Anderson, then. I want to echo some of Larry's comments, so forgive me for that. I believe there are several problems with this agenda item that should be rejected categorically. First, the calculation on how much money is due to Castle Oaks Golf Course is predicated on the total paid by the golf course of $70,000. My recollection of the payments to the city by the golf course are for the land lease and the water usage. The proportion for both is either about $30,000 or $40,000, which substantially reduces the cost per acre foot when the correct amount of money paid for water is used. That calculation is published in the agenda, is incorrect and must be amended if the city council wishes to consider a refund. Second, the city by own provides no water to the golf course independently, but obtains water from CDCR at New Creek via the ARSA pipeline. If there are interruptions of the supply, it would follow that any damages suffered by the golf course should accrue to CDCR. If this council feels otherwise, I think a cogent argument is due explaining your reasoning. Next, it appears that the golf course is requesting the city to accept the quote for, by Fox Loomis, to drill a new water well in the city. The city by own is obligated to acknowledge and follow the requirements set forth by California Public Contract Code, and under no circumstances can the city accept and implement the well-drilling quote. As I previously indicated to this council, public contract code violations are specific and the penalty severe. Willful ignorance of these requirements will have serious consequences for all those involved. Even if the golf course decides to drill the well at their expense and seek reimbursement by the city council, that is a violation of the public contract code standards and are not allowed. Why does the city not use the sump located south of Pond 7? It was rated at least 350 gallons per minute, and about 10 years ago had a $65,000 pump installed. It is more than adequate for the golf course needs. It has, it has no hazardous materials in it and would not expose a residential neighborhood to industrial wastes. The source is reliable and will allow for independence from CDCR and future potential disruptions. It appears that the wastewater committee is excessively differential to CDCR without acknowledgement of numerous problems that accompany their proposals. I think this entire proposal needs reconsideration.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment?
George Lee, I appreciate Mr. Rock's working with me and having the dialogue with respect to the issues that occurred this summer, but I want to point out two differences that many members of the audience have stated. Number one, the payment of $40,000 per year for the lease is separate from the payment of the wastewater treatment fund. Secondly, we are not asking the city to waive any fees, reimburse us any fees, we're asking the city to waive the payments that are due, because we pay four equal payments of about $17,000 a year for the water. So again, this is basically the monies that we spent primarily because the city could not fulfill the contractual obligations to provide the water. And the other thing that I'd like to point out is, is that- And the other thing that I'd like to point out is that the reason why we're here today is because of my personal opinion, and I've read all the documents and we've had a lot of different eyes look at it, is because the city, in my personal opinion, gave a premature five-year notice to ARSA, okay, without a secure source of water. Okay, I understand what ARSA did. They have to do what they have to do to protect their own interests. But at the end of the day, the city did give that five-year notice to terminate that contract to ARSA. But the key language is they did not have a secure source of water. So in my personal opinion, it was premature. We are still suffering today. We do not, we do not have a secure source of water. So we are still looking at many, many options because, and working with Mr. Rock, he's been helping us and he's been very, very cooperative, but as I sit here, stand here tonight, there, we still do not have a secure source of water. And ARSA is going to be, that contract is going to terminate in July of next year. And, you know, we have no guarantee that we're going to get a certain amount of water every year. And more so, in what you said, Mr. Rock, the majority of water is used in the summertime, not spring, not, we're using no water now, but the majority of the water is used during the summer months. So like Mr. Rock said, it was a perfect storm, it is what it is. So again, we're not complaining, we're just trying to see waiver, not reimbursement of payment. And again, we are still looking at the solid issue. We're looking at some other sources and I continue to work with Mr. Rock to seek some other solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, George. And I agree with you 100%, by the way. Wait, come on, give me.
Mr. Comment, Tom Quinn. We spend an awful lot of time in these meetings on the golf course. I mean, it would, in my opinion, be a really good idea to as much as possible disengage and untangle our relationship with that entity. I don't see why we have to give them water and put up, you know, we have all this stuff we have to talk about that place. I doubt one person in town, in real Idaho, the old town, plays golf. Most people play golf from out of town. Golf's a great game, it's wonderful, but boy, we spend a lot of time in meetings, water things, all that good. That'd be great if we just kind of backed off a little bit. As far as this stuff, I would hang back for a couple of months and really look it up. There seems to be some really serious differences of opinion as to the monies owed or the money is given or the money is refunded, whatever you want to call it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Got anyone on Zoom done? No. Close the public comment. Don't want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendations from staff.
Second.
First and second, any other discussion?
I mean, this should be noted too, that we did survive. And like you say, there's a bunch of things that happened. I mean, ARSA did not give us much water, if any at all, so I don't even know if they would give us water anyway. That's an assumption we can't make. We did survive the worst drought in tough shade, but we survived it. And we've got more houses coming online every day. I think long-term, this is what, you know, we're seeing a trend and I think in the right way, but this was really one of the driest and longest sustained heat waves we've ever seen. And the fact that we survived, I think that's probably a positive thing overall, that we, you know, hopefully brighter days are ahead and we have no rainfalls and, yeah, that's kind of one of my first comments.
You got any comment, Diane?
I have a couple of questions. We're doing this in response to ARSA's not fulfilling their contract obligations in providing water and our contractual obligations to the golf course is correct?
Well, I would say the second part of what you said is absolutely accurate. We have, we want to make the contractual agreement with the golf course right and fair and equitable, and we don't want to breach that contract. And that's, and the golf course sent us a letter asking for this relief.
Okay, and we're doing this due to the drought. This has, this is not a request based on any COVID benefits or any of that?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's aside from COVID? Because we rented contracts, let's see, to other of our contractors due to COVID. So I just wanted to clarify that we're, what the basis of this is.
That's correct.
And if we are, if we do this kind of a rebate or allow them to cut back by the 15% or 20% or whatever, that's actually, I think comes to a total of 30%. Are we setting any kind of a precedent for future years to do this again?
No. No, that's not the intent at all.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
I look at it as we're his landlord and we're supposed to, it's like a normal pleaser. We're supposed to offer garbage or water, we're supposed to give it to him, so we're able to give it to him, but.
Well, I agree, Stacy. We, you know, we own the golf course, so we have to maintain the golf course in good order.
Yes, I wish we could give you a little more, but legally it sounds like we can't. So I would normally vote no on this, but I'm going to vote yes when it comes to that point because I want to get the lease on.
To be clear, I believe that $70,000 number that came, it was actually kind of a give back from the golf course to the city based on what the assumed raw water needs would be to keep the golf course green. So instead of buying raw water, we're recycling it, which makes the state very happy. It also gives us flexibility long-term because we've had, off and on, we've had too much water, too little, but we've always had a disposal issue, which is why we have cover crops. And we are making some changes to our sewer plant to be a little more flexible. So hopefully, down the line, as more houses come online, as the water amounts increase, we'll be able to have more flexibility. The other large issue too is the prison, their census is down quite a bit for a variety of reasons, and so some of their water output is a little bit lower than it normally is. We knew after they did all the improvements that the water amount from the prison A and B, the level two out back, that the water consumption, production would be about the same. The turbidity is up a little bit, obviously, because you have more people and more restrictive amounts of water. So that's just kind of some background stuff. It's not really, it's partially germane to the topic, but that's kind of part of that discussion.
Okay, Janice, you want to call a vote?
Did everybody vote? There was a first and a second.
Yeah, it's not a voter, he's calling for the vote.
Could you all call the vote for us?
Councilmember Emerson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten?
Aye.
And then Mayor Rhodes?
Aye. I just have it.
Okay, moving on to item four, a word of coronavirus aid relief economic security act business financial.
Does somebody want to go get Dominic?
Go get Dominic.
Someone bang on the door. The one on the phone notices he's not here.
Yeah, that's funny, yeah.
I can see everything.
Oh, there you go, that's what.
Someone's missing.
Apparently a better view than we have. Yeah, those are great points, Councilmember Emerson. We should have 100 more units occupied by next year, and we should have more inmates by next year. And we'll have more water from AWA as they are making some improvements. So it was literally a perfect storm of no storm, and I do believe we'll be in a better position next year.
Okay, now we moved on to item four now, correct? A word of coronavirus aid relief economic security act business financial assistance forgivable loan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, including the vice mayor. As you recall, a couple of months ago, we came to you with round number one, as we were calling it, of money through the CBPG state government, which got coronavirus relief from the federal government, which was passed down to the state government through the CBPG program for what they're calling the emergency business loan financial assistance program. We ran into some technical issues which we needed to clean up. We've done that. We have a forgivable loan document that each of these businesses have to sign. We've also requested that these four businesses, plus the first round businesses that the council's already approved, provide the proper documentation. There are certain things that we have to turn into the state regarding that they meet all the requirements of the grant, so their payroll, how many employees, you know, that you have a business license, that you meet all the rules and regulations. And so this is the second round. This is $20,000. This will expend almost all of the money that we were awarded through the CBPG program. $3,000 will be charged to administrative overhead costs, as is allowed under the grant, and $60,000 to the actual small businesses. So this is the final four businesses that qualified under the rules of the CBPG grant. And good news is we haven't received any new applications. So all the businesses that did apply and did qualify are in this second round. And then the next agenda item, you will see some other businesses that didn't qualify for CBPG but did qualify under the ARPA rules that the ad hoc committee looked at and was approved in the budget. And we'll get to that item next. Happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you. Did we reach out to the people that didn't get it the first time? Is that how this happened?
Yes.
Okay. When will the checks actually be cut?
Tomorrow.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Any public comment on this? I didn't see none, anyone on Zoom?
Nope.
Close the public comment. What?
I was then step up.
Oh, go ahead.
But you can't answer me.
Raise your arm or yell or whatever.
For the second round, was, what was put out to businesses to know that there was a second round?
How did we contact them?
We, we did a whole bunch of PR stuff. We had some stuff in our newsletter, we had stuff in the newspaper, we had stuff on the webpage, we talked about it at now four city council meetings. We went door to door in the downtown Main Street and actually talked to the businesses face to face.
I don't have a door downtown. And I was told I was not eligible, but I see businesses on the AER, I'm not sure what you call it, that have been in business four months this year. Yet I was told I could not apply. I didn't see anything anywhere, social media, newspapers, newsletter. So when I read the agenda yesterday and saw that some of these businesses that have only been in business a short time this year, not through COVID, yeah, I was a little shocked.
Thank you, Allison. Okay, no other public comment, it looks like? Close the public comments. Don't want to make any motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion that we award the ARPA, oh, wrong one, sorry, got ahead of myself, award the coronavirus aid relief economic security act business financial assistance forgivable loan.
Second? First and second, Janice, you want to do a vote for?
Councilmember Emerson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atlin?
Aye.
Mayor Rhodes?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item five, a word of ARPA funds for local businesses.
Thank you again, Mayor, and members of the council. Under the American Rescue Plan Act, which was the federal government's several trillion dollars of relief for COVID, part of that money went to the city of Ione. And under those rules, we are allowed to assist small businesses who had suffered through the COVID crisis. And the staff is recommending the following list of businesses be awarded through the ARPA funds that the council adopted in the budget last month. They adopted a, actually a very significant ARPA budget, and this was a piece of it. And all of the businesses on this list applied for the CBPG monies but did not qualify for one reason or another. In some cases, their businesses were new and they started too late to qualify under the CBPG because you had to already be in business by the beginning of 2019. And various other reasons, they didn't qualify, but we felt that they did qualify for help under the ARPA rules, and that list is here. And it totals $55,067. And the council approved $55,000 of ARPA money. So we'll find $67 in the ARPA fund. There's still a surplus, a slight surplus in the ARPA fund that will fund the entirety of this list. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Michael.
Is this the final round or?
Yes.
I have a question, is there, which business on here has only been in business for four months?
Yeah, and again, that's okay under ARPA rules, just not under the CBPG rules.
So they wouldn't necessarily have been affected by COVID?
They made a passionate plea that they were in their application.
The CBGB funds, you had to be in business in 2019, and we all know that COVID has carried through, through 2021.
Sure. Yeah, and some businesses are still stuck for a night. That's a good point.
Okay, open up for public comment? We have one on Zoom. Sheldon, Shelton?
Yes, hello, this is Sierra Shelton. I am the owner of More Than Small Industries. I am one of those new businesses in town that did not qualify for CBCG funds because of the use of my industry. I do appreciate that the city was able to accommodate the level of help that you're offering for my company, but I am concerned that it may have not been equitable for other businesses that were also newer or other companies that... I had no idea that there was a second round outside of CBCG. I applied to CBCG and was told I did not qualify. And I don't want to be ungrateful, but I also don't want to have any bad press because I have been a recipient of something that wasn't made available and equitable to all the businesses here in town.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Close the public comment? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award, the award of, to approve the award of the ARPA funds for local businesses.
I'll second it. Do we have any further discussion? Nope. Okay, can you call, roll vote please?
Councilmember Emerson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atlin?
Aye.
Mayor Rhodes?
Aye. Moving on to item six, recommendations from the wastewater committee, direct staff to resume the November 2018 agreement with DTA to continue a comprehensive study of the development impact fees and NEXUS study. Submit an application with the CBRWQCB to amend the DWR permit. Direct staff to meet with the MCSP and draft a formal agreement to accept MCSP's effluent.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. The wastewater committee met on November 1st and discussed all of these items. The first item is to direct staff to reengage DTA to complete the development impact fee and NEXUS study. So in November of 2018, the city council approved a contract, a consultant services agreement with DTA to provide a comprehensive study on development impact and NEXUS fees. DTA started that process, reviewed park development impact fees, wastewater fees and some other fees, met with staff. and some other fees, met with staff, did some substantial work. And then through a series of events, the city manager retired, an interim city manager was hired, and then another interim city manager was hired, and momentum was lost. I reviewed the contract very carefully. The contract was signed, and it's still a valid contract. The work was started but wasn't finished. So the contract is good. I spoke to Shane Morgan through email yesterday, and he is agreeable to continue and to finish this contract. I do need to speak to him about the possibility of doing a master fee study, which would be a little more comprehensive than what you have here. So DTA would complete all of the development impact fee studies, but we have an opportunity here to review all of the master fees for the city, if the council's interested in that. Would cost more money, we could do an amendment to an existing contract. And by master fees, I mean things like the business license fee, you know, all the hourly rates that staff can charge to reviewing, you know, plans and reviewing things that come through for the planning and building process, and virtually all the fees that we charge, even for things like copies and just, you know, any master fee. That's something we could do now, or we could do it later if the council would rather just focus on the development impact and nexus study. The nexus study is important because this would be the document the council would need in order to consider the wastewater fees that we charge. Can't really consider changing those fees without doing a nexus study first. So this is why this is coming now. The council would have this opportunity to finish the wastewater or to the development impact and nexus study, bring that back to you as soon as it's complete. And then depending on how that looks, the council can then consider reviewing the, all of the fees, all of the development impact fees that are charged, plus the wastewater fees. So that's item number one, and they are, DTA is willing to continue. Item two is related to a meeting that staff had with the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board on October, I think it was the 9th, October 7th. And we met with them for several hours. We took them to the wastewater treatment plant, of course. We took them to the golf course to look at drain inlets. We took them to neighborhoods that had French drains, and we took them to the creek, and we took them to a bunch of places so that we could, you know, explain to them where the water's flowing, how it's flowing, what's going to the creek and what isn't. And through that meeting and discussion, I suggested that the city, really, it's time to update the permit. The city is at capacity with its wastewater flows based on the current WDR permit that we have. We cannot accept any larger capacity than we are accepting now without amending the WDR, so we need to do it anyway. We also have some other operational issues that need to be addressed in an updated permit, including how we handle the sledge, which we've already agreed to change, and to haul it off directly rather than first put it on the ground and then dry it out and then haul it. We're just going to haul it directly, which is much more efficient for us, actually. And the water board is much happier with that process. So that's already been changed, but that needs to be reflected in the permit as well. So that's item number two. And item three is really, it's an issue, it's something we're doing, but we don't have any really legal agreement to do it with Mill Creek State Prison. And we really ought to have an agreement with the prison that we would accept their treated wastewater through the tertiary plant and at what price, and we need to agree to that in the legal agreement. We have been accepting their wastewater from time to time, and we have been charging them for it, and they have been paying in good faith. But a longer term agreement with more specific items like who's testing for what and who's responsible for testing what constituents, and all of those sorts of details really ought to be memorialized in a legal agreement. So that's item number three. Happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
I got a question or two. This agenda item, to me, should have been broken out into three different things because I strongly support one of them, one of whom I'm totally against, so I don't know if I'm going to vote on this. The DTA, glad you clarified that, I know who that we are already in some sort of contract with them, so that's good.
Yes.
Good. The second one, when you amend the WDR, are you also going to apply for the connection of the two plants?
Yes, that'll be part of the amendment.
Okay. And then there was a third permit, and we still had it, and Howard and I talked about this for a long time, it's the applicant. We can land-apply our own sludge on our own hay fields, it's just it's never been brought up to date. So it does exist.
We can, but the water board doesn't, they don't like that.
Oh, doesn't matter if they like, it's legal that we can do it, we have the permit.
Well, we like to be cooperative with them.
And the third one, which is to meet with Mill Creek on the effluent, I think it's a horrible decision to do that because there's such a huge ongoing litigation going on with that water. I don't think we should catch that with a 10-foot pole. That's just my two cents on that one. And that's it for you? Hold on, is there any discussion or discussion?
You speak in the mic, please.
Why don't we do that?
I got my questions.
Diane?
Diane, you got any questions?
I'm waiting for God or empty technical questions.
Okay. Okay, we'll open this up to public comment. Any public comment on this?
The city council is considering drafting and executing a long-term agreement with CDCR for the contaminated effluent. The city council was advised in May of this year by Howard Holt that the use of the contaminated effluent is a violation of the city's waste discharge requirements. Asking for a revision of that document is at your discretion, but until it's revised, it's a poor strategy to try to contract for a commodity deemed illegal. Also, the city wants to explore a sewage rate increase, but for years sewage fees paid by the residents have contributed to the operation of the tertiary treatment plant for which they derive no benefit. Proposition 218 clearly indicates that if there is no nexus between the fee charge for a property and the benefit derived, then it's a tax. No tax has been approved for the operation of the tertiary treatment planned. Some consideration needs to be made for fees paid that have been without proper authorization. Also, staff has indicated the sewage capacity is at limit. Given the number of approved housing developments, are the connection fees sufficient to spend capital improvement funds to expand the capacity? The connection fee should be a proportion of capacity allocated to a new home. Staff has proclaimed Ione is the fastest-growing city in Amador County. Are the sewer facilities keeping pace? The statements made by staff seem contradictory. It appears this agenda item needs some work. And I should add, it's parallel about the irrigation potential that the city already has, but it's irritating and confounding that it's not even up for discussion. You all seem to ignore it like it doesn't exist, and it's a factor in all of these issues. I'd like to have some feedback if you guys want to tell me why. You have a $65,000 pump you pay for, that would be more than sufficient to take care of some of these issues.
Do so. Come here, have you on.
Anyway, it's all good.
Thank you, Dave.
Can you wake him up?
Please, thank you.
I agree with what he said. We're 218s totally against what you guys have been charging for the, we've been supplementing that since, no 213, and that's about $660,000 we've been subsidizing that tertiary plant. And my sewer does not go to it. That's totally against 218. I think the grand jury ought to look into this, and we've been charging, I think you're paying $325 a year or something, $310, and I see the new budget's 414 to run the tertiary plant, and we aren't even hooked up to it. And you're accepting water that the water board told ARSA that they shouldn't put in Preston Palm, and all of a sudden, politics got involved, and now we can do it. And our local people have been testing the water, no independent contractor, which I think is totally illegal. He has, no, he's not a, it shouldn't be anybody from the city checking his sewer for that BCOs and BSCOs. That's industrial waste, by the way. And if it was an industrial permit, they wouldn't be releasing that stuff. They'd be telling how to fix it. And you, I don't see anything in here about putting something in our plant to do away with that and give that, if they're going to do it, the government, prison will pay for every ounce of it, and they ought to put their own in. I'm totally against doing anything with the prison system. Preston screwed this city when they hooked up to it 30 years ago. They put a 10-inch line on Sutter Lane, kept plugging up, they said it wasn't their fault and was towels and everything in it. So I'm totally against even doing anything with the state. You cannot trust them. We want to write that contract. I hope they give it to the public so we can study it, because the last couple of times we've got scoots on every contract. We need to read that, line by line, just like the city did when they tried making it for the memorandum of understanding for the county that time, the first one with Chris Jordan. Thank you.
Any other public comment? No. Anything on Zoom, Tom?
No.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion? Well, I mean, can we approve individually or?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we take a break it up and through your? Yeah, we'll call it, we'll just maybe do one at a time. Item 1, 2, 3, call that.
Sure.
So I'll make a motion that we approve item number one, direct staff to reengage DTA to complete the development impact fee and nexus study.
Before we do that, I have a question on that. How much? Okay, second.
All right.
So on that one, how much extra would it be? It seems that the bulk of the funding is to do the nexus studies, so it doesn't seem like it would be a whole lot more to do, like the individual fee studies.
Well, you know what I just remembered is that the city budgeted $50,000 for this study two years ago.
Yes.
And it's $43,000 on the thing now, hey? Their court was 43, so we're actually getting it cheaper?
Yes. We could probably do a master fee study for the money that's already been budgeted three years ago and not spend another, and not spend any more money than the city's already set aside.
Because we got an extra almost 10 grand.
Yes.
Very fortunate.
So we could do, we wouldn't even have to do an amendment because their agreement was set at not to exceed $50,000 and did include studying almost all of our fees, it just didn't include the business license and a couple of other fees.
Okay, that would be good. I would like to see that now.
Okay. Yeah. Any other discussion from anyone?
Do we need to amend the motion then? Does that mean you? So I'll make a motion to amend that we include the master fee study. Maybe second that and I'll vote on that. Let me first.
I'll second it.
Maybe we have a roll call vote on that for that amendment, and then we can keep discussing. Does that make sense? We had the vote on the amendment, because we made a motion to make amendments, and now we have a roll call vote on the amendment.
Okay, do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Emerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atlin.
Aye.
Mayor Routh.
Aye.
So let me keep discussing it with the amendments.
Okay.
So, there is discussion.
Continue.
No, I mean, it's been, it's overdue. I mean, it's like everything else has been held off for a variety of reasons, but it's time. I mean, we kind of have a pretty good idea of what the plant's going to look like going forward with some of the other changes we're making, so I think it's time. The fee study, I'm good with that, too. It's good.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Okay, so another way to make another?
No, no, the motion is, to be voting on is a complete motion. Okay, so.
Okay, so then, moving on to?
Have we had?
Roll call vote on that?
Yes, correct, yes.
Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Emerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atlin.
Aye.
Mayor Routh.
Aye.
Okay, now can get a motion on item number two.
All right, I'll make a motion, submit an application with the CBRWQCB to amend the DWR permit.
Second.
Now, any more discussion?
No, I think we submitted it, I mean, you had things changed, we need to get it fixed.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Roll the comment. There we go, we have all the comments. There we go, okay, sorry.
Councilmember Emerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atlin.
Aye.
Mayor Routh.
Aye.
Okay, then item three, vote.
We get another motion, direct staff to meet with Mill Creek State Prison and draft a formal agreement to accept your effluent.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Point of order, please. Is there a conflict present with Commissioner Atlin voting on this motion as the CDCR water is used exclusively to water the golf course?
Counsel, what do you think?
That would be up to Councilmember.
It's a legal question.
What do you think? It's up to you, Dominic.
Well, I think when it comes down to approving an agreement, then perhaps I would have a conflict, but to enter into discussions, I don't think that I do, but I'm happy to, happy to recuse myself.
Point you back to the conflict of interest.
Can you speak in the mic so we can hear?
I'd point you back to the conflict of interest and whether, and it's your decision whether or not, and I have it here if you want.
Yeah.
Okay, it's your decision whether you believe you have a conflict or not.
Okay, so let me read this to you. Do I have a financial interest in this, entering into a discussion with, with staff to meet with Mill Creek State Prison? And I don't. So for me, I don't have a financial interest in staff negotiating or having, the wording here is to work on a formal agreement. Now, if in that formal agreement there's some funding involved, then I would say that I would then have a conflict, and I would recuse myself for that time. Maybe. I'm just, I don't think I have a financial interest.
Detroit's, Dominic, what do you want to do?
It sounds like he made a decision that he does not have a conflict.
Well, I mean, I'm not an expert on the rules. I mean, like it says here, do I have a financial interest? And I do not. So when there becomes some money change in hands, then I would.
Okay, let's move on, what's to vote then?
Well, I mean, we have a discussion, I think, I mean, it's important that, I think that we, one, we accept the water as it is through ARSA. We need to have a broader discussion as to what the ongoing is going to be. It's going to take some time to get there. I think it's absolutely important that we actually, I think it actually gives us stronger legal standing if we have a formal agreement that explains what each person's role is, what our responsibilities are, and if things go wrong, what are our recourse is. I think it's absolutely essential that we have a, I mean, they've been a partner with us one way or the other for many years, for better for worse, but they are upstream and we are downstream.
I just want to add, one of the reasons I'd like to see the city move forward with an agreement is because there are some issues with Mill Creek's water, and this would be an ideal opportunity to put in whatever kind of provisions that the city would, you know, accept the water. So whether they need to put in, you know, additional filtration equipment or whatever.
Yeah, and I would add that... Yeah, and I would add that obviously before any agreement would be reached with Mule Creek State Prison, the regional board has been working very closely with the city on what the quality of wastewater is, is the effluent coming out of Mule Creek and going into the city and then going to the golf course. I mean, currently, Mule Creek pays the city to accept their effluent, and then we charge the golf course to then deliver the effluent. So, there's no personal financial interest at all in that process. We currently test for a number of VOCs in the Mule Creek State Prison effluent that we receive, but before we would enter into a long-term agreement, we would meet with the regional board and be very clear about what their expectations are for accepting that effluent and what constituents that Mule Creek should be testing for before they send their water to the city. And they are testing for a whole host of VOCs right now, and that list is going to get a lot longer because the state is going to require... The regional board is going to require the Mule Creek test for every constituent, which is actually a much more economical way to do your lab testing. It's much more difficult for the lab to pick out certain things to test for. It's much easier if they test for everything, and that is going to be a requirement of the regional board on the state prison's effluent. And we'll get into all that when we talk about the agreement.
With the ARSA agreement ending in July of next year, I believe we need to have some kind of contract that assures us enough water so that the golf course is not left without water, thus leaving the city in a liability situation. So, I am... I believe we need to begin these negotiations.
I've got one other last question or comment. Isn't the pipe that is being used ARSA's pipeline? The pipe that's actually delivering the...
No.
No.
It belongs to... It's the city that owns by mine.
Okay.
Okay.
Paid for by Castle Oaks residents.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
Sorry, maybe just...
Okay. Let's do a roll call vote, please, Dan.
Councilmember Efferson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atlin.
Aye.
Mayor Rhodes.
No. Go ahead. Moving on to... Reports and communications from the city manager. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Two quick items. Number one is that the city is still recruiting for a maintenance worker, administrative analyst and a building inspector slash code enforcement officer. The deadline to apply for the maintenance worker and admin analyst is November 19th, and for the building inspector, the deadline is November 30th. The final draft RFP for the redesign of the Castle Oaks right-of-way landscaping and maintenance agreement will be completed soon, and we'll be in front of the city council to consider releasing for bids, I'm hoping, next month. So, we're getting very close. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Council comments, committee reports, and future agenda items.
ARSA is tomorrow.
Nothing for me.
Diane, you have anything?
Nothing for me.
Okay. I just had a couple of things. The VFW did their awards the other night, and I believe this is a countywide thing. Our wonderful John Alfred Sargent over here, Officer of the Year. Good job, John. It's amazing how many people came from all around the county to come see this. The VFW just got a new roof toward their building, and it's quite good-looking in there. You have time, go in there and check it out sometime. And awful... Also, Fireman Bennett got firefighter of the year, so we've got the best firefighter and the best placement, so... Keep going. Another thing is, people probably noticed that there's some work being done on the train depot, so they're finishing the little... I call it a gazebo, too. What word is it called?
Pavilion.
Pavilion. Pavilion is being worked on. And I mentioned this a while back, and I finally did get the check and gave it to Chris. Mule Creek gave us a check for $20,000 to go towards the basketball courts that... And that is all I have.
Well, your comment is that there will be a Christmas parade this year, too, by the way.
If you'd love to bring it, know that.
Yeah, thanks, man. If I see him, I'll let him know.
Okay.
Motion adjourned?
Motion to go back into session.
We have...
Square reset.
Second.
Okay. Roll call on a motion to adjourn?
Councilmember Efferson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ratten.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atlin.
Aye.
Mayor Rhodes.
Aye. Good night. We're going to go back into session.